The meeting now to for Monday, August 22.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, we come again saying thank you, Lord God. Lord God, I'm just asking that you will continue to cover our city, Lord God. In the midst of chaos, in the midst of turmoil, Lord God, I'm just asking that you will cover us. Lord, we thank you for everything that you're doing in this season. In Jesus' name, amen.
Clerk Golick-Rokoff.
Alexander.
Present.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Galwinski. Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakos.
Here.
Warple.
Here. Let the record show, eight present, seven, or one absent, seven in chambers and one on Zoom.
Mayor.
Hi, Council. It's great to be back. Good to see you all. Wanted to give you a report. Last time I gave you a report was right after the Festival of Lakes. So thanks for, I think Phil filled in for me last time, but wanted to update you. Since we last met, we had the Whiting-Hammond After Midnight Bike Ride, WAM Ride. Around 900 riders this year. Total success. I thought it went really well. It's a free event. We stopped charging years ago because it was hard to police it. We would say you had to pay 10 bucks and then people would just like start riding their bikes. What are you going to do? Tackle them and knock them off their bike? So we just stopped charging a while ago and it seems like it's gotten bigger since we stopped charging because people feel free. But that went really well. We had a lot of people coming to Hammond that night. The way I see the world right now, we have three things that we all need to complete, three official things. And I know you guys see the world similarly, that we need to complete before December 31st. I was talking with Megan about it today, just so we're all on the same page. Obviously budgets, Civil City, Sanitary District, H2O, HPA, Police and Fire Salary Ordinance, and the elected official salary ordinance. We all know that. Is Megan here? What's the date on that? October 31st or is it October 1st? End of year, right. Okay, so what's, October 31st? Okay, what's the deadline now?
The deadline for...
The budget?
The budget.
October 31st? Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. So October 31st for our budgets. Police and Fire Salary Ordinance needs to be done by the end of the year. Or is that one at October 31st as well? Okay. Okay. Another thing that needs to be done before the end of the year is districting of the six council districts. It doesn't look that difficult to me. I don't know if you guys have seen the numbers yet. It seems like it's going to be fairly straightforward. I personally think that we should have six council districts with about the same number of people in them. I think that should be our goal personally. And I was just looking around. It seems to me like the second's a little low. Right now, and it seems like other districts are a little high. I don't think it's going to be very drastic changes at all. We're certainly not going to be like the legislature and make Salamander districts. It's going to be pretty straightforward. If we need more districts, you know, more residents in a district, we'd probably just lop off a neighborhood, you know, a couple of streets. Hopefully that makes it up. But hopefully we could all agree on that, but it does need to be done before the end of the year. I know Kevin will be working on that from my office, so look for that. And obviously, if anybody wants to help draw these, and obviously the council people that'll be affected the most, obviously district council people, we will be in constant contact with you. So everybody's comfortable with what we're talking about. I'm going off the top of my head, I know for a fact, looking at, I saw the map a couple of times. I know the second was the lowest in the city right now. And that probably has a lot to do with neighborhoods that we've acquired and people moving out. So we have to reflect that in these districts. So I imagine the second gets a little bit bigger. I think the first gets a little bit smaller, literally a couple hundred people, max. So we're talking a street here and there kind of stuff. But that needs to be done before the end of the year. And then the American Rescue Plan Round Two needs to be done before the end of the year. We talked about that the last time I was here. I can answer any questions on Round Two ARP funding if you have them. I do have the statistics with me right now. Hammond-Civil City Buyout Ordinance. I know that you will have an ordinance pending for first and second reading. Hopefully by the end of this meeting, if not by the next meeting. We want to offer in the Civil City, not, this has not been authorized in the Hammond Water Department. This has not been authorized in the Hammond Sanitary District, and I'll explain my reasoning in a second. We see an opportunity in the Civil City to enact a buyout and cause some personnel turnover, which is good for us. It's quite frankly, it's good business too. A lot of the people that are taking the buyout are, I mean, not even a lot of people, the people that are taking the buyout are some of our highest paid employees with the most vacation, the most seniority, the most expensive employees. And in replacement of these employees are the younger employees with less seniority and less vacation. They'll be at work more often. So in a lot of ways, buyouts make sense financially, especially the way Megan and I want to approach it this year is if somebody takes it in public works. I always, I'm just using this as an example. I don't know if this gentleman's planning to take it or not, but Gary Gleason in the Hammond Sanit, oh, excuse me, in the Hammond Department of Public Works. If Gary takes the buyout, he's the department head. We're not getting rid of Gary's position. I think we can all agree, we need a leader of the Department of Public Works. But what will happen is through the shuffling that takes place, we will be looking to get rid of the driver spots, which is usually what becomes vacant when people move up to replace that. So we will be looking to replace most spots that we buy out, which will help make our budget process easier. And like I said, I think one of the great things about buyouts also is when the employees take the buyout, they sign a release upon their exit from the city Hammond, which clears legally. There's no like worries about legal liability at that point, once a release is signed. So buyouts make sense, in my opinion, for a number of reasons. We haven't offered a buyout in City Hammond since 2017, so we don't offer these all the time. I'm telling the employees, there ain't no guarantees in life. This may not be offered ever again. We're asking for a quick turnaround. From, once the council approves it, hopefully. Right now, I believe it says, so let's assume you pass it at the next meeting. So that's what, early September. We want by the end of September, it closes. Employees got to make quick decisions. We don't want it lingering through the budget process, whether or not they're on offense, whether or not they're going to leave. We're going to offer to them. If they say no, we go forward with the budget process and there ain't no guarantees in life. Okay, so that's why we're talking about it now with our employees, to give them a heads up that this is hopefully going to come. Obviously, the council's got to pass it and I got to sign it. But as long as it is passed by the council and signed by me, the employees will have till September 30th to take the buyout. We're offering $1,000 per year of employment, and obviously, you know, their vacation and all that will be bought out at the end as well. So that's one thing that's pending before you. And last but not least, I wanted to address the Martin Luther King Park shootings that we had take place a week and a half ago on Thursday. Actually, I have the date off the top of my head. Let me think real quick. 25th, that would be 18. I think it was the 11th of August. I want to get this right. Yes, thank you. It was the 11th of August on Martin Luther King, in MLK Park, on the basketball courts. Two 15-year-olds got into an altercation. Both of them were armed. I believe one of them had the weapon on him at the basketball court. The other one had a weapon close by. When they started fighting, they started shooting. Both of them were injured, taken to the hospital. Thankfully, both of them survived, were injured. Obviously, very scary for everybody that experienced the shooting at MLK Park. Keep in mind, we all know this, I'm saying it for the people at home that are watching, is MLK Park is also surrounded by houses. Little kids are playing in MLK Park. Obviously, for me, for the council people, we just got done doing a huge multimillion-dollar renovation of MLK Park. We installed a new walking trail, quotes by Dr. Martin Luther King, a memorial plaza of Dr. Martin Luther King, basketball courts that are first-rate. We have a lot of people traveling from other cities and across City Hammond to play at our courts. We appreciate that. It's a very active park. So obviously, that was mentally scarring for me. Scary. It's right here, you know? All these kids work and play here. We work here. So two days later, two adults got into a situation at MLK Park. One gentleman, I believe, if he wasn't 40, he was close to 40. Thank you, ma'am. 39. And another gentleman who unfortunately was shot and murdered, was in his 30s as well. That also took place in front of kids, in front of neighbors, very dangerous situation. We apprehended the shooter. He's in custody as we speak. This was the second shooting in three days at MLK Park. Both of them on the basketball courts. I made a decision as mayor, after consulting with council people, I don't want to say who, because this is my heat. I thought it was best to be consistent with how we approach problems in our parks. And I'll remind the council that I was in here a couple of months ago complaining about graffiti in a park in North Hammond. And I took a very heavy-handed approach to the graffiti problem in North Hammond. And I shut that skateboard park down and I threatened that we were going to move it to another part of the city if the kids didn't take care of their park. And we left it shut down for more than a month. And it's been open now. We haven't had any problems, being honest with you. Hopefully, the neighbors are taking more responsibility for their park in North Hammond. Hopefully, the kids are taking more responsibility for their park in North Hammond. So at MLK Park, when there was a murder and two shootings in three days, I didn't have a choice. It's a dangerous situation. It's a jam-packed park. And I love the fact that it's jam-packed. We spent money to make it jam-packed, so the fact that people are getting killed in Dr. Martin Luther King Park is, is not a good situation. Dr. Martin Luther King, as we all know, was a nonviolent protester. The park is named after Dr. King. I think we need to remind the neighborhood and everybody around here that that park is Dr. Martin Luther King Park, and that's not going to be tolerated. So it's shut down indefinitely at this point. I'm being vague on when it'll reopen, but I think we've got to keep it shut down for a while. I know Councilwoman Katrina is working right now on setting up a community meeting. I don't know if you want to address that, Councilwoman?
Um, yes. On this Thursday, there will be a prayer in the park at the basketball court at 5:00 PM. And there is a community meeting that's scheduled on August 30th at 6:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center, where some council representatives will be there. You'll be there on your schedule. Chief Andy Short will be there, as long as, as well as ministry or alliance representatives will be there. And the whole goal of the meeting is, we want to, we know the situations and the problems that we have in our city, but we want to come up with solutions so that we can continue to thrive.
Yes, ma'am.
That we can continue to have our parks open. It's sad that the parks, you know, the park isn't closed, but the basketball court is. And we want to come up with a good solution that we can reopen the parks as soon as possible.
Thank you, Councilwoman. So anyway, that's my report. I'm not sure if anybody has questions about anything I reported. I'm available if you are.
I see, yeah, Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor. A question about the murder behind the mini-market at Holman and 142nd a few weeks ago. Any updates on, on that?
Thank you, Councilman. I do not have any updates on that. I apologize. I get briefed on them when they happen and I don't get briefed as often when they're a couple of weeks old. I'm not sure if the chief is here. Yeah. Corporate counsel says ongoing investigation at this point, still, Councilman Mark. I'll try to see if Chief Andy could reach out to you and give you an update, okay?
I appreciate that. And one more question. I thought I heard you say the Round Two ARP dollars were going to be appropriated? Or the projects are going to be approved? I just wondered, which projects are they for Round Two? And did any of them get pushed off of the round because of lack of dollars right now?
Counsel, yeah, Councilman, what I said is, we need to get Round Two approved through the council. So that process hasn't started yet. As you know, if it did, you would see it. We talked last meeting or the meeting before about our ideas, about, and I know some of the projects that were in Round One that we anticipated being in Round Two weren't going to be put in Round Two. But the projects we started in Round One, Round Two is sufficient to cover the cost of, the cost overruns on the projects in Round One. I hope that didn't confuse you. So everything we committed to in Round One is going to be completed with the money we have left over. We anticipate having a little bit of money left over also for one other project in the third district that we worked real hard with Councilman Barry and the Ministerial Alliance, and that's the project in Memorial Park. And quite frankly, Mark, excuse me, Councilman Kowinski, I think that's going to be pretty much everything, being honest. So Round One will be covered. I think, one, on all fairness, I know Councilman Warple, the fifth district councilman, one of the projects we hoped to get done in the fifth district had to get wiped. We're trying to figure out another way to pay for that as well. So, but everything we committed to in Round One, we have sufficient cover in Round Two. But Councilman Mark, we still haven't presented you all with the budget yet, and that's got to be the first step, so.
I got you. I appreciate that. One last item, because I came in a minute or two after you started speaking. Did you mention that the buyout would not cover sanitary or the water department?
Yes, sir. I did mention that, and I'm glad you asked about that. I mentioned it, but I didn't explain why. Until, first off, we didn't want to, usually when we operate, because obviously I'm the mayor of the whole city, I don't really see the difference between sanitary, water, and civil city. For me, we're all the same team. And I usually am very strict about everybody getting treated the same way. I do, I can tell you that in the sanitary district and the water department, we have certified water handlers that it takes years to get these designations, and we're, just like everybody else, we're scrapping for manpower right now. And certified water handlers are gold right now to us. And quite frankly, I'm afraid if we offer the buyout in water and sanitary, that the certified water handlers will take it and we'll have to pay them money to leave. And quite frankly, we can't really afford to lose one of them, Councilman Mark. So I left the door open to the sanitary district and the water department. I said, if you guys could explain to me why this isn't going to hurt manpower, I'm open-eared. But at this point, Councilman Mark, we're just offering it, it's a proposal, obviously, pending before the Hammond City Council. And if it's approved, it applies only to the Civil City right now, Councilman Mark. Not to the Port Authority, not to the Water Department, not to Hammond Housing, not to the sanitary district at this point. If that changes, I'll update the council as it goes down. But the department heads in each of those utilities has to speak directly with me and explain why it won't affect manpower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Councilman. I appreciate it. And another thing I wanted to address while Councilman Mark's on here. He sent me pictures of right-of-ways in North Hammond, and I want to apologize to Councilman Mark and to the residents of North Hammond. The right-of-ways are out of control with weeds. And I talked to my staff today about rectifying that yesterday. It's unacceptable, the way the right-of-ways look, Councilman Mark. And I know that that was a private conversation. I do want to acknowledge you're doing your job and bringing up problems to the mayor, and it is a problem, and it'll be fixed tomorrow, okay? I apologize.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. In, in our defense, that area is a construction zone. This is where the new train line's going, and it's all very rough right now, but that's no excuse to let the weeds go three feet high. And we'll take care of that tomorrow. So, any other questions? Thank you, Council. It's great to see you all.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Rakos.
I, Spitali. Make a motion to accept the minutes for August 8, 2022, and be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick-Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Make the motion to pay claims dated 8/8/22 and ending with claims dated 8/17/2022. Claim number 4873 through claim number 5187 in the amount of $4,468,715.31.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick-Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number six, public hearings. There are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have any communications?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
Like to announce the HUGS Cultural Committee is sponsoring the Hispanic Independence Parade on September 25th at 12:00 PM, starts at Morton and goes to Purdue Northwest. And following the parade, there'll be a Hispanic Heritage Month Festival at Purdue Northwest on the 169th Street side.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications?
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. I wanted to announce that there is a September 11th remembrance ceremony. You can't, this is on September 11th, obviously, at 9:00 AM. It's up by the big flag, way up north. You can enter through the marina and enjoy the scenery up there. In addition to the ceremony, it was spectacular last year. So hopefully, we have the same kind of weather. That's September 11th at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Councilwoman Katrina.
Even though I mentioned it during the mayor's report, we will have a prayer for the village, unity in the community, a prayer on the basketball court at MLK Park on August 25th at 5:00 PM. And our community meeting, it's Unity in the Community, community meeting with our mayor and ourselves, with Chief Short and the Ministry Alliance Representatives on August 30th at the Ophelia Steen Center, 5927 Columbia Avenue at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Hearing none, communications are closed. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, yes. The Capitol Improvements Board met on August 15th. We approved $47,900 for the 165th and State Line improvements. The next meeting will be on Tuesday, September 6th, because of the Labor Day holiday on Monday. Tuesday, September 6th, the work-study session will be at 5:30 PM, and the meeting will begin at 6:00 PM. And I'll continue, Mr. President, with the community and crime watch groups. Coming up, let me say, I'm going to go into October. Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza will be Wednesday, October 11th at 1:00 PM. The East Hammond-Pulman Crime Watch will be on Tuesday, September 20th, beginning at 6:00 PM at the Ophelia Steen Center. Edison Community Watch will meet Wednesday, October 5th, 6:30 PM at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will be Tuesday, September 6th at 6:30 PM at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 15th, 6:00 PM at the Jean Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet Friday, October 7th, 9:15 AM, and that is a bilingual program. And I don't know the date on this. It's, I know it's October 13th, which is a Thursday. The South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch will meet at Trinity Lutheran Church at 173rd and Holman, beginning at 6:30 PM. And the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet Thursday, September 8th, 6:30 PM at, in Whiting at the Mascot Hall of Fame. Until they get approval from Calumet College, they'll continue to meet there. As always, I urge everyone to attend a community or crime watch meeting in your neighborhood. You can find out a lot about what is going on in your neighborhood and pass along tips. Most importantly, we need to be the eyes and ears of our police department for our neighborhood. So please don't hesitate to call 911, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Hearing none, committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinances, third reading and final passage. There are none. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item eight, ordinance 22-31 sponsored by Councilman Torres. And ordinance, excuse me, and ordinance vacating a portion of a north-south alley east of Calumet Avenue, lying within the 4,500 block and within petitioner's property in Block 10 in Toll and Avery's addition to the City of Hammond, in the City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading of ordinance 2231 with a public hearing set for September 12th, 2022 at 5:15 PM.
You mean council as a whole that day too?
Yes, refer to councilmen, as council as a whole.
The public hearings on September 12th for the meeting. What's that? Public hearings at the meeting. He's, he's putting the council as a whole at 5:15, correct?
Right.
Got it. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres, you, you made the motion. Who seconded it? Councilman Emerson, we have a second. Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. On the agenda, it says the public hearings on September 26th, correct?
Yeah, but he changed it to the 12th.
So it will be on the 12th?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance vacating a portion of North-South Alley within the petitioner's property and will facilitate the development of a dormant vacant building to transform to a viable business as proposed by the petitioner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick-Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item B, ordinance 22-32 sponsored by Councilman Torres. And ordinance vacating a 25-foot portion of the 4,500 block of Cedar Avenue lying within petitioner's property in Block 11 in Toll and Avery's addition to the City of Hammond, in the City of Hammond, Lake County, Indiana.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres, I'm sorry. I'm spacing it.
Yeah. Move for first and second reading of ordinance 2232 with a public hearing set for September 12th, 2022 at 5:15, and refer to council as a whole.
The council as a whole will meet at 5:15. The public hearing will be during the next meeting, correct?
Yes.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any?
President.
Councilman Torres.
This is part of the same property as 2231, just the east portion of it, it's 25-foot portion that needs to be vacated. And again, is to enhance that possible business coming into that, into that location.
Thank you. Go ahead. Was it, were you done? I cut you off. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick-Rokoff.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Galwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos. Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
Item C, ordinance 22-33 sponsored by Councilman Torres. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the City of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the City of Hammond including the regulation and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan as amended for property commonly known as 4545 Calumet Avenue in Hammond.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for first and second reading with notice of intent to consider on September 12th, 2022 and refer to council as a whole.
5:15?
5:15, yes, sir.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance reclassifies the property of 4545 Calumet Avenue. The president has two different classifications, so this reduces it to one. So make it more suitable for the upcoming development by the petitioner. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick.
Mr. President.
President.
Uh, councilwoman, Councilman Rakos.
I make a motion to suspend the rules to add a ordinance to pass first and second reading, number 2234.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules for the purpose of amending the agenda.
Second.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. The ordnance, amendments, we amended the agenda to include ordinance number 2234.
Mr. President.
He's got to read it by title.
Okay. You got it? Make a motion, pass first and second reading for 2234. Ordinance amending ordinances 9390, 9207, 8880, 8942, 8091, 9016, 9072, 9207, 9124, and 9305, creating a voluntary retirement program in 2022 for certain eligible employees of the City of Hammond.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
This is just a, a ordinance, like it says, it's offering a voluntary retirement program. We want to pass it on first and second reading and have it, so we can pass it in a timely manner for the employees that choose to take this voluntary retirement by the end of September.
Thank you. Is there any further? You done?
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos. I'm sorry, Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you.
I'm not firing on all cylinders today.
Me either. Listen, I just wanted to mention, which was spoken about in the caucus, that sanitary, water, and Port Authority staff slash employees are not included at the present time in this buyout ordinance, per the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the motion carries nine in favor, zero opposed. Entertained the motion to go back to the regular agenda?
I make a motion and we go back to the regular agenda. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Alexander, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number 11, resolutions. There are none. Item number 12, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I make a motion that we move our October 10th meeting to October 11th due to the holiday.
Motion's been made to move the October 10th meeting to the 11th by Councilwoman Vines.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I have the good news that MJ Polish of 7412 Calumet Avenue in Hammond in the 4th District has celebrated 25 years at that location. And they have the assortment of foods that you take home, Polish sausage, obviously, Polish hams and great treats from Poland, imported from Poland, and cabbage rolls and whatnot. And it's saying something to be in business for 25 years at the same location. So we're happy about it.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman.
They have outstanding sandwiches.
Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none, new and unfinished business is closed. The last item on the agenda is public expression. I remind everybody, you've got three minutes. And our first guest hasn't been here in a while, Gary. Sorry to hear about your father over the winter.
Gary, I'm sure 6700 block of Alexander, so. I hope the mayor was talking about getting our street, one of the projects, maybe, getting funded to get done. I hope. So anyway, that's one thing. Because it needs bad. I mean, even in the winter, I had my cameras in my house and caught the mail lady even tripped on the sidewalk, fell on her face. Hope she didn't get hurt. But yeah, it's getting pretty bad. Dip in the road. I was at a public, board of public works meeting and made some of the things aware to them. Because there's a dip in the middle of the road. It is getting worse. It's sinking more and more. So cars are scraping the bottoms. It's right in the middle of 6700 block of Alexander. Okay? And then the other thing is, we can work on getting, you talk about the weeds and everything. There's an alleyway from, it's from Alexander to McCook. And I brought that up too, that it's getting so overgrown. It's a 15-foot actually alleyway of a property. So they are, and then some on Nickel Plate Street. Yeah, there's a place of business on Kennedy Avenue that actually moved some stuff behind their building to back by Nickel Plate Street. But I think it might still be on their property. It's a big pile of stuff. So anyway. Yeah. 853-6302. Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Because I'd be willing to walk with them, do whatever, look around, so, you know. I know, you know, Councilman Warpo's been great about getting some things done. But some of these, yeah, more, so, okay. What else they have? Also, I want to thank Councilman Rakos and Councilwoman Barry Tyler. He, both of them were at our Hessville Crime Watch meeting. And it's nice to hear other activity that's happened in the city. So it was wonderful that he showed up and everything, Scott. So we had a good time with that. And of course, Scott Roldes is there. What else? Dave Ennis, yeah, he's making a movie. I think he's becoming a movie star or something. Yeah, he is. So, but that's about it. And like I say, appreciate getting stuff done and getting our.
I'll talk to you after the meeting, Gary.
So, okay. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Hope Brooks Comer, is it?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm speaking on my sister's behalf. The incident happened in the park on August 13th. The guy that got shot and killed was my nephew, which is my sister's son. And I'm just upset, angry, disappointed really too. Because I lived on Lion Street for over 10 years. Bullets have came through my house with my whole family there, you know. And Close in the Park should have been shut down a long time ago. And it's not there for the kids that really live here, that really wants to play in the park. But then we have people coming over here, getting vouchers from Illinois and their residents here. And that's not fair for the Indiana residents that stay here. And I understand, thank you for taking the basketball courts down. But it was just a little bit too late. Now, my nephew's gone. You know, the shooting happened on Thursday. Two people were shot. Then they had a shootout on Friday. Nobody got shot, thank God, then. But on Saturday, it took my nephew's life. And he was 39 years old. So with that being said, with the parks, if they ever do get open, when I lived over here, all I asked for was some security for the park. Police officer, we have plenty. We could have had some standby. And maybe my nephew could have been alive today. So that's all I had to say.
Mayor.
I appreciate her coming up. It's a tragedy what happened. I'm really sorry, on behalf of the City of Hammond. Why, that's why we shut it down, obviously. We can't have gunplay going on in Hammond Park. I do want to point out, in defense of the Hammond Police Department, because I'm quick to come down on the police department when something like this happens. And there was a police officer that went by the park about one or two minutes before the shooting took place. Literally, about one minute before the shooting took place, there was a Hammond cop that was right there. The Hammond police officer didn't deter the shooting at all, and that's a fact. We have it all, everything over there is on videotape. Like, one minute before, the officer was there, literally drove by the shooter, and then the shooter walked on the court and did what he did. It made no sense. It was horrible violence. I'm so sorry, on behalf of the City, ma'am, for your family.
Judge.
Sorry for your loss, man. Let's hear, what I want to present is, I'm going to call it off the beaten path. I don't know how to approach it, really. I was listening to the radio the other day. Well, back on August 12th, I read a little news, diddy, in The Times about Munster's plan to, they received $700 million on an 80/20 split, I guess with the federal government, courtesy of the interventions, I guess, or the work of our Congressman Mervan. And they were going to fix up, I guess, and improve, update, whatever you want to call it, Ridge Road. And you know, I didn't think much of it. Okay, yeah, you know, skim read it. And then a couple days later, on WJOB last Tuesday, the duo of Dustin Anderson and Larry Gardner were on in the Town of Munster program. And they were, you know, bragging about their vision and their strategy for Ridge Road. And the longer I listened, I was just listening in passing, they talked about how they're going to reduce Ridge Road, I believe it's still Route 6, still part of a federal or state highway system. They're going to reduce for 1.3 miles. They're going to reduce ultimately Ridge Road to two lanes. You know, this is not Holman Avenue we're talking about here. We're talking about something that, 1.3 miles from Columbia to State Line for the specific purpose of, to benefit the citizens of Munster, as if, you know, they were on island and, you know, and no one else was around. And I found it somewhat offensive, not outright obscene. And so I couldn't believe that I really heard it. So I called up and I said, hey, did I hear you right? I was speaking to both men. They go, well, yeah, you know, that's, you know, give me that Orwellian doublespeak. Well, yeah, so it's not really going to go immediately, but yes, that's our plan, I thought. And all I could say was, wow. And so I'm wondering, given that if you were to reduce Route 6 or Ridge Road down to two lanes, all that traffic that goes there is going to be rerouted from east to west and probably going to go through 173rd in Hammond, probably 165th. And it's going to, and we're going to, and not to mention the more traffic on Columbia, Calumet, Holman to circumvent this, because this is going to act as a deterrence. It's one thing to create a shopping, let's call it, commercial enclave like what's being planned here in Hammond, on Holman. Holman goes, you know, from the north, what is it? Somewhere around Sheffield to empties out where, Framlin Parkway, by the hospital there. I mean, I guess you follow the curve. I mean, but we're talking about Route 6. And this city should reconsider, I hope it intervenes and takes it up because they're talking about Route 6, man. That's four lanes. You know, if you go up Calumet Avenue, US 30, there's only two lanes going each way. Until you get to, I don't know what street it is. And then it becomes, opens up to about three lanes going east and west. But for a long stretch there, a couple miles, it's four lanes. They claim, no, you're going to love this one. They claim that it's to ensure the safety of pedestrians on Ridge Road. Well, I'll tell you what, I invite any of you here to take a ride from Columbia to State Line and tell me how many pedestrians on any given day that you see walking on Ridge Road. I want to, it's a handful, at best, at best. So there's this phantom number of pedestrians that are endangered, endangered, he claims, Dustin Anderson, I think the guy's from Connecticut, that are endangered by this. And of course, they want to make it safe for the cyclists, of course, everything for cyclists. But we're talking Route 6 here. Route 6, this is not Holman Avenue. Again, this is not, this is not within the city. You know, that's a thoroughfare that's shared by everyone in northwest Indiana. And I would, I would hope that the City of Hammond take this into account because what they're doing is externalizing the cost of maintaining streets because there's going to be increased traffic, without a doubt. No doubt to the north. There isn't much to the south, except it's all, it's not even, well, it's really developed a whole lot differently. You don't have the access, at least the convenient access. But what I really don't like is the fact that it seems like, socially speaking, it's as if Munster wants to, because 45th Avenue you really can't use. And what else is there? I don't know what other, off the top of my head. But it's as if they're trying to create a Republican enclave to wall themselves off. It's almost like. to create a Republican enclave to wall themselves off, something like a Plessy Ferguson type of segregation. "We're the Republican bastion of Northwest Indiana, and by God, we're gonna wall, and we're gonna wall, keep ourselves away from the unwashed Democratic Party." You guys really gotta look into this. This is just obscene.
Thank you, George. Your three minutes is up. Next, Carl Wolf.
I'm here to talk about the Hessville Dunes and to give some more information about the importance of that area. So, as has been reported in various news sources, including the New York Times, "The United States Faces Deep Inequity When It Comes To Tree Coverage Across The Country." "Urban Green Space Plays A Profound Role That Great, Plays A Very Profound Role In Limiting Temperature Rise." "And Trees In Urban Areas Play An Outsized Role In Protecting Communities From The Worst Effects Of Climate Change." "Trees Are Quite Simply The Most Effective Strategy Technology We Have To Guard Against Heat In Cities," Says Brian Stone, Professor Environmental Planning At Georgia Institute Of Technology. "Neighborhoods With Majority Of People In Poverty Have 25% Less Tree Canopy On Average Than Those With A Minority Of People In Poverty." "In Most Extreme Cases, Wealthy Areas Have 65% More Tree Canopy Than Communities Where Nine Out Of Ten People Live Below The Poverty Line." Now, I know that's not the case in Hessville, but nonetheless. "Rich Americans Enjoy More Greenery Across This Country Than Those Living In Lower-Income Communities." This is the trend present across the country. "In Certain Areas, The Difference Can Be Particularly Striking Because Where There Is More Heat, There Is More Death." "Heat Kills More People In The United States Than Any Other Kind Of Extreme Weather." "We Can Expect Up To A Tenfold Increase In Heat-Related Deaths In The Eastern United States By The Late Half Of The 2050s." "Being In The Vicinity Of This Living Infrastructure Provides Many Other Benefits. Healthy Trees Trap Air Pollutants." "It Brings, Being In The Presence Of Trees Has Also Been Found To Improve Youth Educational Performance, Mental Health, As I Said Last Time, Physical Health And Social Connections." "According To TreeEquity.org, That Particular Census Track, The Hessville Dunes, Is Number One In This City With A Perfect Score Of 100 In Terms Of Tree Coverage, Tree Canopy. But To The Immediate East Along Grand Avenue, The Score Drops To 67, Ranking 54th Out Of 72 Census Tracks In This City. To The Immediate South And Southwest The Same. And To The Immediate North, The Score Is 66, 57th Out Of 72 Tracks In This City." So, right there at Hessville Dunes, I mean, of course, it's the most tree-dense area in the city, according to TreeEquity.org, the perfect score of 100. And it should remain that way for the long-term benefit of this city. "There Is No Question That Trees Are Important. And I Would Ask Again That The City Reconsider The Plans For The Hessville Dunes, A Place With Hundreds If Not Thousands Of Trees. I Ask That The Council And The Administration Think In Innovative Ways To Both Solve The Problem Of The Trains As Well As Protect That Very Important Area And Build It To A Place Of Recreation And Health." Thank you.
Alvin.
First of all, I accept your apology. That was cool of you to be real. I'm not gonna make it private, because the officer interrupted and searched me, because he smelled weed. So, it's not illegal to smell like weed. But the point that I'm here for is that, I have a son, Alvino. Hope, I've been, I've been knowing him for 40 years. You know, her mother, she used to give me tea cakes, I know them very well. The gentleman that got killed, you'd see him every morning at the gas station, 5:00 in the morning. Taking down the rims that slow down the traffic is not gonna fix the problem. What I was saying to you when I was interrupted by the captain is that you need a roving patrol with three officers on bikes. You have bikes already. Turn the area into like a satellite substation where those officers can pass through there all the time. You know, the problem is, is that these young guys, they got scooters that are faster than your squad car. So they automatically know when you're in the neighborhood. The things that are going on in our neighborhood gonna stop when the men get involved. The police, they can't stop what goes on in the neighborhood. They react after it happens. The people that live in the community, those are the people that stop the crime. Of course, we don't want what's going, we got young guys with poles on them, like I was explaining today. If we're gonna stop it, you gotta stop it by sitting down with the men in the community and making them proactive in the plan. These young guys, they don't, they don't respect, they don't remember when Pete used to walk in the neighborhood, when Dave was a cop, and they, people knew who those officers was. I'm referring to the officer because he said he knew me. He doesn't know me, he know my name. I came here when I was 15-years-old, because I broke a window, you were, had an issue with the court, so they assigned me to you, Dave. And I learned a lot from you. And the one thing I learned from you, you take care of the young people. So we gave out hoops and portable baskets to the kids today to make them feel a little better. It's not gonna make them feel safe. Like Officer Mickey said at the Crime Watch meeting, taking the rims down is gonna make people feel safe. That's BS. You gotta have a proactive program that these guys see police. They see the squad car from 10 blocks away, the way the neighborhood's set up. So why not use a Henry Union-style approach? The officer did admit in the back that the other approaches they're using, because they're antiquated. These young guys, they know all of the police tactics. So the only way you're gonna fix your problem is sit down with the men and have the men talk to those young people. You could talk to them till you blew in the face, you can arrest them, they'll be out in 10 minutes. You have to involve the men, and you need a substation. I understand that police are leaving, I understand that our budget's not where it should be in terms of that. But why not rotate the officers and use that as a, as a city point or a substation line? So when the officers rotate, and they just rotate through the park. And that'll make some things stop. Shootings are not gonna stop. They're not. You're not gonna stop murders. I love that young brother, he was a cool brother. But that's not gonna stop crime in our community. You stop crime through the people in that community stopping crime. You can do whatever you want to me. I tell officers that all the time. I'll be out of jail before you get out of jail. You know, so why not be proactive and use us to help the people? That's how you fix it. We know that the mayor cares about the kids. He's donated millions of dollars to the kids of Hammond, so we know he cares. But the police, their tactics are antiquated. You gotta get new jack. And it's just boring what they're doing, so try a new approach. Put some, you got bikes over there, you don't have to buy no new bikes. You got a four-wheeler that you guys never really used. Try that in the park. I'm not saying spend more money. I'm saying use new tactics. Let the people get to see the officer riding around with his window up in the car, that's not, that's not working, obviously. So why not go back to the basics of police work? And I got 30 seconds left. I'll say this in closing. If I'm wrong, just stop me. That's all you gotta do, is say stop. We discussed that in the hallway.
Wrap it up.
In 35 years, I've never been disrespectful to this council. Ed Repay trained me, Raskowsky trained me. So I'm not going anywhere. I'm a hardened soldier, and I'm gonna protect my neighborhood. If you guys wanna help us, fine. But if you don't use us, you're not gonna fix that park. So why don't you have the men help you?
Thank you.
Have a great night, man. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Cheeks. No, I said, "Thank you." First off, I wanted to respond to the last few speakers, I thought they were all excellent. Carl Wolf, very great speech, I appreciate it. I agree. Trees are vital. I was just reading an article, listening to a podcast about how America needs to plant a trillion new trees. And, you know, so your speech hits home, I appreciate it. I want you to know, and it may sound funny to you, that I agree with you in a lot of ways, but it's also difficult running a city. But I appreciate your passion, and I'm listening to you, and I appreciate it. George, I thought your speech was excellent, I appreciate it. I would urge you to please reach out to Dean Button. I think your points are valid, actually, that if this did happen to Ridge Road in Munster, it would affect our city, and I think we have a say. And I appreciate you bringing that up, I hadn't heard that. I don't listen to the Town of Munster show on WJOB. So if you could bring that up to Dean, so we could start looking into that, I'd appreciate it. And last, and Dean's a professional, as you know, he goes to NERC meetings, I'm sure he knows about this, but I appreciate you bringing that up. I think it's completely valid. It's not, very often you get discussions about Ridge Road and Munster, right up to Hammond Council meeting, and it applies, but I think it definitely does. So thank you. And last but not least, to Mr. Cheeks, I appreciate your passion, and I know you care a lot about the community, as do all of us. You know, it was a man that killed another man on the court on Saturday, that's very disturbing. Obviously, we need to work our way through this horrible situation, and I appreciate the woman who spoke on behalf of her nephew, and again, so sorry about your loss, ma'am. And we need to do something, because it's not tolerable. I drove by the park right before I got here, and there was a little girl, right by the basketball court, sitting in the shade, on a blanket, just enjoying herself. And I was thinking, wow, you don't really see that very often there. You see it jam-packed with people. Going back to Carl's point, I imagine, very hot out there, not a lot of shade in MLK Park, but there was a little girl just chilling by the basketball court, just sitting on a blanket, and I was like, wow, you don't see that very often. And so I think that we need to remind ourselves at MLK Park, he's a peaceful person, and we can't tolerate that. So, God bless the council. Thank you to everybody that spoke today. I'll see you guys next meeting.
Thank you. Ken.
One of the hot topics of the day is climate change. And I already talked about the heavy rain events that we're going to be getting, more heavy rain events as time goes on, and they said something like 17% more heavy rain events are gonna happen by 2050. A climate study was conducted by Purdue University shows not just more rain is coming, but in extreme, extreme temperatures are coming as well. Parts of the US, including Indiana, will experience heat-indexed temperatures reaching 125 degrees or above by 2050. Removing 35 acres of dune woodlands and covering it with asphalt will intensify this. And the flooding risk as well. These are not just a bunch of trees, it's an entire ecosystem that will be destroyed here. Each tree is cleaning and cooling the air, storing carbon, and providing valuable habitat. We're talking thousands of trees, okay? It's a forest. How do we talk to our children as they enter a world faced with so much uncertainty about this? What will the world be like in just 25 years for them? Can we be honest with our kids and grandkids about the actions we are dealing with in this issue here? Or will we just rationalize our decisions based on finance, convenience, or our careers? What would the conversation with our kids sound like in talking about this particular project? Maybe something like this, I'm thinking. Little Susie, I realize you have tough times ahead dealing with what looks like it's gonna be a dramatic climate change in your future. You know I have tried hard to make the right decisions that would make your life easier and the environment better. We have a project of which I play a role in its execution to solve our train nuisance. It will mean cutting down over 1,000 mature trees and bulldoze dunes over 1,000 years old in our neighborhood. It will destroy valuable habitat to thousands of animals. Your world is going to get hotter, and with these, and with fewer trees to protect you as well. But I just want you to know, there is no other way to solve this problem with the train. It is the only way. You understand, don't you, Susie? I understand. Well, I don't think this person's being very honest with Susie, because there are several options to solve this problem that the city hasn't even tried to look into. Ways in which a city never even pursued. There are solutions within budget and a lot less collateral damage to the environment. There are residents who have no idea their homes are in the path of this bridge and are slated for demolition. Right now, kids have no idea their beloved woods will be destroyed. Most of the Hessville has no idea the neighborhood is about to get a lot higher by nature, by man, and by this design. We want a solution to our train nuisance, not a road, a development, in search of a solution. Build an underpass at Grand or Parish Crossing, add a pedestrian bridge, and the problem is solved. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, Linda Angianno.
I put it phonetically here for you. Angianno. Okay, I got my stopwatch. Mr. Golick, you weren't here last meeting, did you, did you see the video of it? I thanked you for the letter to my mother.
I did, get the message.
Condolences on my dad. So I want to talk a little bit about moms. And I went to a meeting by the group Indivisible, and they had Moms Demand Action there. And it's a group that started up in Northwest Indiana three years ago. And one of the startling, startling statistics I heard is, do you know what the number-one cause of children's deaths are? Guns. Guns. And so their main focus now is on making sure that the guns are smartly protected, that kids are protected from them, removing the ammo and all that. And I'm gonna switch to my mom. As you all know from last meeting, she's a recent widow, she's 90. And she still works at Walgreens at 169th and Kennedy in Hessville. She let her license lapse, but I'm taking her to get a test again. And this route for the bridge, she's very unhappy about that. I'm speaking on her behalf tonight. She said that they'll still get trains. This Saturday, I was trying to get to Walgreens to see her, and there was a train stopped on 169th right by Kennedy. And of course, it was stopped on Arizona. So she wants to know, how is she gonna get to work if this bridge is done, because more train crossings are gonna be blocked? She also wanted to know about ambulance service. In the last one year, my parents had approximately 12 911 calls, mostly due to my dad's heart, and you know he passed away from heart attacks. But if some of these railroad crossings are closed, I'd really like to know how the ambulances are gonna get to my mom's house. I've been on Klein a lot lately, and that's because I've been going to Portage back and forth. And 8094 is just, yesterday it was just locked in both direct, just parked. And so people are hopping off 8094, and I sometimes take 2012, or I take Ridge Road, and Klein is just jammed. So how are the ambulances gonna get to my mother's house, 3752 173rd Street? And how are they gonna get her out of there to Community Hospital? That's what I'd like to know about this bridge plan. Okay, 303.
Thank you. Entertained a motion adjourned?
Make a motion adjourned.
Motion been made. Got Clerk Golick, Roca.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spatelli.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Yowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
He said yes.
He said yes, thank you. Emerson.
Yes.
Rakus.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Record show nine in favor, zero opposed. Oppose, meetings adjourned.